The minutes from August twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen meeting.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman, Councilman Emerson to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Moving on to approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Make a motion to approve claims, beginning with claims dated nine-four thirteen and ending with claims dated nine... Four thirteen? We have an error. And ending with claims dated nine-four thirteen, claims forty-two thirty through claim number forty-four twelve inclusive.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali to accept the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I have one claim to amend in. This would be claim number forty-four-one-three for two hundred dollars for the Hammond Boxing Club.
It's a motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali to amend the claim for two hundred dollars Hammond Boxing Club. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the amendment? Court Golic will call vote on the amendment.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. amended claims passes, seven, two absent. Now on the claims as written. Any discussion? Clerk Golic will call vote.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims passes, seven, two absent. Moving on to public hearing, there is none. Number six, communications. Any communications? Any communications? Hearing none, singing on, communications is now closed. Number seven, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Council as a whole will be bringing out thirteen thirty-seven and thirteen thirty-eight.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Council as a whole, thirteen thirty.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance's third and final rating.
Ordinance number thirteen thirty sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and Ullaki. Ordinance authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana to issue its Economic Development Revenue Bonds Series Two-Thirteen for the Munster Steel Project and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for final passage of thirteen dash thirty.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali for third and final passes. There are any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
This is, uh, Munster Steel going after their bonds which, uh, can't, will not exceed three million and will be paid by January first of twenty thirty-nine, uh, to be, so that they can begin their new building at the West Point Industrial Park located at Hewin, Hundred Forty-First Columbia. Generally known as right behind the FedEx and Holcher facilities in the West Point Industrials room. Total investment is six million dollars. They're hoping to create about forty new jobs by the year twenty sixteen with an average salary of approximately forty thousand dollars. They're going to construct a building that takes about a hundred twenty-three thousand square feet and it'll be a steel fabricated building with another five thousand six hundred square foot office building. And the proposed Munster Steel project is in complete compliance with the redevelopment plan. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golic will call vote on thirteen thirty.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance thirteen thirty passes, seven, two absent.
Ordinance number thirteen thirty-seven sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and ordinance amending ordinance forty-one oh nine, seventy sixteen and seventy-three thirty-five, also known as section ninety-one point zero-nine-two of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to fees paid for the quarantine of biting dogs.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of thirteen thirty-seven.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henosa for final passage of thirteen thirty-seven. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this ordinance is to increase the fee from fifty dollars to a hundred and twenty-five dollars for an animal that has been quarantined as the result of a fight. Uh, the animal must be quarantined for a period of ten days. Uh, anytime after that ten days, there will be an additional ten dollar charge per day. Uh, and this is to cover the expenses at Animal Control for housing the animal for a period of ten days.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golic will call vote on thirteen thirty-seven.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance thirteen thirty-seven passes, seven, two, two absent.
Ordinance number thirteen thirty-eight sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and ordinance amending ordinance forty-one oh nine, seventy sixteen and forty-two oh one, also known as section ninety-one point zero-seven-four of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to fees paid for impounded and unflamed animals.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of thirteen thirty-eight.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henosa. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this ordinance would increase the, uh, uh, the fee to reclaim an animal that was, uh, picked up wandering around, um, if your dog got off the leash or out of your yard, something like that, and Animal Control picked up the animal. Um, the fee will now be thirty dollars to reclaim the animal and it will be ten dollars per day for each day that the animal is impounded. And this is to reflect, once again, the actual cost to the city.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golic will call vote.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance thirteen thirty-eight passes, seven, two, absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Okay, moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Item A. Ordinance thirteen thirty-nine, an ordinance for the appropriation of the tax rate for the redevelopment budget.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Yeah, I'll move for, uh, first and second reading of thirteen dash thirty-nine.
It's a motion by Councilman Henosa.
Public hearing.
Public hearing set for nine...
Nine-twenty-three thirteen.
Nine-twenty-three thirteen.
It's a motion by Councilman Henosa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Ordinance thirteen dash forty. An ordinance for the appropriation of the tax rate for the Senate District.
Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that thirteen dash forty pass through first and second reading. You refer to council as a whole with a public hearing on nine-twenty-three thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second pass.
Item C. Ordinance thirteen dash forty-one sponsored by Councilman Spitali and ordinance creating a new non-reverting fund, fund number two oh six, entitled the County Economic Development Income Tax Seated Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move through first and second reading, refer to financing.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by...
Second.
Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes, refer to financing.
Item D, ordinance thirteen dash forty-two sponsored by Councilman Spitali and ordinance creating a new non-reverting fund, number two-one-zero, entitled the Public Safety Local Option Income Tax, or Lloyd for short, Tax Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Make a motion for move through first and second reading and refer to financing.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kowinski. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution thirteen R dash twenty-eight sponsored by Councilman Henosa. A resolution establishing public policy for diversity in city employment and appointments.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Yeah, move for, uh, move for final passage of thirteen R dash twenty-eight.
Motion by Councilman Henosa, second by...
Second.
Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Uh, this is just, uh, a resolution, uh, uh, it's, uh, some, something so that, uh, the appointments, uh, somewhat reflect the diversity in the, uh, city Hammond. Uh, for example, the Port Authority where we have, uh, uh, let's say no Hispanics, uh, that maybe, uh, in the future we consider putting Hispanic on there or African American. Uh, and the same thing with the library, there's no, uh, Hispanics on that, uh, on that board at all. Uh, but it doesn't necessarily have to come from the council, it can come from the mayor, it can come from the library board or, or, uh, any other, uh, body that, uh, does the, uh, uh, resolutions for that.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golic will call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Resolution passes, eight, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Moving on to number eleven, New and Finished Business.
Item A. Consideration of the Mayor's veto of ordinance ninety-two seventeen and ordinance amending ordinance eighty-five seventy-four, also known as section seventy-two point zero-one-six of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to administrative towing fees.
Anything on ordinance ninety-two seventeen? Anything on ninety-two seventeen? Anything on ninety-two seventeen?
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Who was the sponsor of that ordinance?
I was.
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
So what seems to be the problem then if, usually when an ordinance is brought before the council, I would imagine that, um, the mayor already had this typed up by the law department. I mean, Mr. Berger, did you type this ordinance up?
No.
No. So the law department here?
Yes, I've been here.
Okay, so, I mean, if that ordinance was typed up by the law department and, and usually, and when it's typed up by the law department, there's usually not any problems and then I'm just curious what seems to be the problem with this one that the mayor's vetoing this? If you can explain anything on it.
Mayor decided to veto, it's his choice.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Uh, as long as we got the city controller here, uh, if I have a decent understanding of what, of what's going on, the county income tax is going to, uh, start collecting money and we're not going to get any until February. Uh, even though we're getting county income tax, it's not going to equal what we've been putting in from the casino funds to put into the budget so we don't have to lay off police officers and lay off firemen. Uh, can the city controller give us a roundabout estimate of, even though we're going to get this county income tax, how much that is and how much we're still going to have to use for casino money next year? Estimate?
City Controller Lindy, if you want to speak up, step up to the mic.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Councilman Henosa are... Could you clarify your question slightly for me? Is there...
Okay, um...
I'm trying to relate it, I guess, to the resolution or...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, uh, I mean, there, there's a lot of people out there that say, well, why, why, why are they raising this fee? Why are they raising that fee? I mean, even before the county, county income tax, I mean, if we're short thirteen million dollars in the budget and we're using casino money, like we have in the past couple of years, now there's a county income tax, uh, the county income tax, I believe, is not going to equal, uh, thirteen million dollars that we're going to get from the, uh, from the county. So do you know, have to know what, uh, what the estimate is that we're going to get from the county?
The estimate's currently from LSA or the legislative, nonpartisan Legislative Services Agency, uh, believes that the city is going to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of eight million dollars from the county optional income tax.
Okay, so we're rough, we're going to roughly probably put about, uh...
Ten million.
Five million dollars or ten, how much?
Ten million dollars is what is estimated as the council's gaming, uh, supplement to the general fund for the twenty-fourteen budget.
Okay, so even though, even though we get eight, eight million from the county income tax roughly, uh, we're still going to have to put ten million compared to thirteen million last year?
Correct.
Okay, so before this county income, my, my point I'm trying to get across is there's a lot of people out there, because we've been raising a lot of fees and voting, the council's been voting for a lot of fees for a lot of things, but it's because not only are we behind from other cities and other counties and other states, uh, but at the same time, uh, there, there's no money and, and some of these fees, some of these fees go up because they got to go up.
I believe the mayor's in agreement exactly with you, Councilman, and I believe that's why he vetoed this ordinance.
Okay, but I just, I guess, I think Bob and myself, you know, want to know why not this one and the other ones were okay.
It's my understanding that, that the mayor sent correspondence to the city council.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Says here in the ordinance that the Hammond City Controller shall deposit the administrative towing fee created by this section into the Police Equipment Fund established by this section for appropriation and expenditure pursuant to established guidelines. Where has this money been going to in the past?
That's exactly, this, yeah, Mr. President and Councilman Markovich, that's exactly where it's been going. It's been going to a non-reverting fund that's not the general fund, it's a separate fund. So the county optional income tax we're going to use towards the general budget of the police and the fire departments, the gaming money that each of you six district councilmen have been putting in to support the general fund, those are things that are, that are supporting our police and our fire departments' general operations as well as the general operations of many of the departments, uh, in the building we're in now. However, the way this ordinance is, is written and created, it would double the fee which would not go to the general fund. It would not go to help support police and fire general operations. It would not go to help support the general fund, which is what you guys are supplementing with your gaming.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I would like to just know what Councilwoman Vines, why she sponsored this thing and all of a sudden it's no good. I mean, in the mayor's letter, it says here, uh, a need has not been established for this hundred percent increase. So we're going from twenty dollars to forty dollars. I'm just wondering why she came up with this in the first place to go from twenty to forty dollars?
And now all of a sudden the mayor's saying we don't need the money.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I, I do not believe the mayor is saying that we don't need the money. I believe that he's saying that he is in opposition to the fact that these dollars go to a non-reverting account. It doesn't go to the general fund and that is the problem with the increase in this particular case.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, let the record reflect that I am present, I was running a little late, but...
Got you down for six-twenty.
As it, as it relates to this particular ordinance, uh, a non-reverting fund, the money would actually just sit in that fund and it wouldn't be utilized. So what, what would be the need for us to have it here? That, that would be my question. And if I'm correct, Bobby, um, Mr. Controller, um, as it relates to this particular ordinance, I tried to reach out to the mayor and he was probably in meetings or whatnot for two days, but I was trying to get some clarity as to how this works because initially it was passed and now we're back and he vetoed it, so, um, the ordinance, particular ordinance. So my question to you would be, as it relates to this particular ordinance, what, what, how would it be utilized if it was to stay in position?
If this ordinance were to pass, how would it be utilized? It'd be utilized at the discretion of the, uh, management of the police department.
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Do we know how much money's sitting in this fund now, Bob? You have any idea?
No. Um, I can give you a ballpark estimate, probably fifty-five to sixty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think the letter states as though the mayor's saying that because of the optional income tax, there's no need for it. I, I think that's what his, what he's saying. Am I missing something? Am I correct, Bobby?
No, I, I, I don't purport to speak on behalf of the mayor. Um, however, I read the correspondence to ensure that it was technically correct as far as the, uh, accounting facets of that correspondence. I believe what he's saying is that the Hammond taxpayers are now going to be set with a one-point-five percent county option income tax. It would be adding insult to injury to double a fee in the city of Hammond that is not going to supplant any tax-based relief for those same people.
So in reality, they'll be paying twice? Is what you're saying?
I, I believe that he stated that it's his position that if there's going to be any increases in fees for anything, it should go to the general fund to offset the tax burden of Hammond taxpayers. Currently, as this ordinance is written, that would not happen with the fee increase. It would not go to offset any of the tax burden of city of Hammond taxpayers.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Uh, Bobby, just to help us on, especially now that we're going and getting ready to go into the budget, uh, help me understand, and maybe all of us here, um, la, uh, last year we put thirteen million dollars from our casino money for the budget and we're going to get roughly about eight million dollars from the county income tax. Um, that, that leaves five million that we should put in from our casino money to offset the budget, but now we got to put ten. Is that because there's less money coming from taxes?
No, Councilman Henosa, if you remember, in two thousand and twelve, uh, we dissolved the North Hammond TIF. In two thousand and eleven, we dissolved the Marina TIF. In two thousand, uh, ten, we dissolved the Robertsdale TIF and the Lakefront Development TIF. Now, when we dissolved those TIFs, uh, the general fund saw an increase of those balances of those funds and in each of those three years, it was between five and nine million dollars. Well, I think one year was six, one year was eight-point-eight, between five and nine. Okay, so we had that one shot each of those three years because the council and the mayor decided that it would be prudent to dissolve those TIFs now that the projects were over and the debt service was completed in, in those districts and then use those revenues to help support the general fund. That's where we had those revenues in the, in those three years. In two thousand and thirteen, we, we haven't dissolved any TIFs because we don't have any TIFs that are outstanding that currently have their debt service obligations satisfied.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I, I, I don't understand this whole thing here in a sense because I, I thought the councilwoman said that we don't need this money, but yet in the ordinance she says the Hammond Police Department and Hammond Councilwoman at large wish to amend the ordinance, increase the fee from twenty to forty dollars. And in the mayor's letter, it says, "A need has not been established for this one-hundred percent increase, but yet we've increased all our other fees and, and everything and all of that." So I would just like to know what the councilwoman is proposing here. I mean, what does she want to do with this or, or, or what's the purpose of this? I mean, the mayor doesn't want it, so what are we doing here then? We going to leave it at twenty dollars? Is that what we're going to do? I just want to have some guidance here of what her intention is because she originally says here that they haven't had a raise since two thousand and, uh, four, an increase, so that's eight years. And now they're saying the councilwoman and the police department want to amend it from twenty to forty dollars. But yet nobody knows how much money's sitting in the fund and what are they going to be doing with that money? Does it exactly say what they can do with that non-reverting fund money? Is there parameters for that, do you know? It's just the discretion of a police chief?
I'm not familiar with the, the, actually, you would be more familiar with it than I would. You would have to because you would be the body that would have established that fund for the police department. So you would be the body that would know what that money would, would be for.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's what I'm asking. She's the one that proposed it, an increase of a hundred percent because we haven't done it since two thousand and four. I'm just wondering where she got her information or why we need to do this? Because maybe we don't need to increase it if the mayor says we don't need the money in his letter. An increase has not been established, a need has not been established for this one-hundred percent increase. He's saying we don't need it. I mean, I don't know what the problem here is then.
I think you're taking that correspondence out of context. That's not what it says. It doesn't say anywhere in that letter that additional funds aren't needed to help run government. It doesn't say anywhere in that letter that the police department equipment, such as the police cars that this officer right here is probably driving, is not in need to be replaced. And I think it's, it's a gross misstatement of both the ordinance as it was proposed and the mayor's correspondence to the council to say things of that nature and take it out of context. It's just absolutely untrue. And it's blatantly, actually, it's blatantly false, Councilman Markovich, with all due respect, that you would, you would purport that.
Well, what it says here in his letter, it says, "A need has not been established for this one-hundred percent increase. The fund we are diverting this increased revenue to in has plenty of money available currently." So, for you to start saying anything that they need police cars and all of that, I mean, he's saying, you know, which begs the justification on why we are doubling these fees.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
Just for clarity, that's diverting. Says the funds we are diverting this increased revenue into a, into has plenty of money available currently.
I'd just like to know what the councilwoman's intent is and what the law department's intent was when they wrote this ordinance. I'm perplexed in the fact that the mayor's vetoing this because usually when something comes out of the law department, the mayor is already in favor of something like this. And I, I just wanted to have some guidance.
Councilor, Mr. President, if Councilman Markovich would like to know the intentions of another councilwoman or the law department, I think the city controller's the last person to ask about the intentions of other people.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, if the law department and the councilwoman can give us their opinion and give us some guidance on where we're supposed to go, I'd appreciate that then.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Um, as I understood when I introduced this ordinance, the, um, the amount of time that a police officer, officer has to devote to, um, a tow is about a half an hour. Uh, that's a half an hour that he's off the street. And, um, I was under the impression that this was going to go to cover that time. I was, I was mistaken. Uh, and this was to go to this non-reverting fund, and so I was, I misunderstood.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Case closed. Moving on to new unfinished business. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President? I wasn't here...
Councilman Higgs?
When the claims were approved, so I would like to state, uh, yes for approval of the claim.
The new business I do have, uh, in caucus, we discussed, um, we are gonna have budget hearings, which will be set for Saturday, September twenty-first at nine AM in the council chambers. Um, all the department heads, it's gonna be first come, first served, and as they sign the book, they'll be able to speak as they signed in. Doors will open at eight-thirty and we'll start at nine o'clock sharp.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Um, I would like to announce some crime watch meetings. On Wednesday, September eleventh, Woodmark Crime Watch will meet at the National Guard Armory at six PM. On Thursday, September twelfth, the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet, uh, six-thirty PM at Calumet College. On Monday, September sixteenth, Columbia Crime Watch will meet six PM at Columbia School. On Tuesday, September seventeenth, East Hammond-Poleman Crime Watch will meet at six-thirty PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Thursday, September nineteenth, seven PM, Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Jean Shepherd Center. Also on Thursday, September nineteenth, seven PM, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. Uh, on Wednesday, September eighteenth, six-thirty PM, the Lafayette Crime Watch will meet at Lafayette School. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
There was a resolution passed before I got here, a resolution establishing public policy and diversity in employment and appointment, so I would like to vote yes on that particular ordinance, thirteen R twenty-eight.
We have that. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
I sent, uh, been sending letters in regards to the stumps that are placed throughout my district in trying to get them removed, the nine-hundred block of Merrill, um, eleven-hundred block of Ames, and also there are a number of trees in which, um, we're trying to get picked up on property. Again, I would like to send a letter to Board of Works, Code Enforcement, and the mayor in regards to these particular stumps so that they can address them. I know there's a policy when it's private property, but, uh, David Howard, who's a personal friend of mine, uh, has been a tree at eleven-twenty-nine Morris Street for about, ever since the storm. Today, he was nice enough to cut it down and get it to the alley so we can get it picked up. But there are a number of properties within my district that haven't, uh, been looked at or paid attention to in regards to having those trees removed, and I would like to see, uh, what's the status on them being removed or what needs to be done, where they're at, and how long is it gonna take? Because the storm was about three months ago and they still haven't been removed, and the residents are calling me saying, "When are they gonna clean this stuff up?" Now, they started on the sidewalks, but the stumps are still there from the trees. The park is cleaned up. There's still a light that hasn't been replaced as well that needs to be replaced. So, I make a motion that those letters be sent to those departments so that we can get some assistance in regards to getting them stumps removed. I so move.
Councilman Higgs, before, uh, we move on that, I received a letter on your last, uh, letter that you had sent about the stumps. Um, and in regards to this, um, Dinamuta sent me a letter, "They don't have large enough equipment to remove them stumps," which are located, uh, one at eleven-sixteen Moss, two at eleven-thirteen Ames, one at nine-twenty-six Merrill, one at, uh, four-twenty-three Lewis, one at Martin Luther King Park, and then there's also five in Riverside Park. She contacted Gary Gleason, he knows about them, to bring the payload out because that's what they need to remove these stumps, because they're too large for the park department, the equipment that they have, so it is on the list for these addresses.
So, in, in regards to those particular stumps, are they gonna get the equipment from Gary so they can get them removed? That's my question. I still need...
Yes, Gary knows about that and it is on his list.
Well, I still wanna make sure that we send a letter again in regards to that, and they can notify me as to when they're removed.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Hinoza, to send a letter to, um, street department or, where do you want this letter to go, Councilman Higgs?
Board of Works.
To the Board of Works in regard to the stump removal in Councilman Higgs' district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Letter granted. Any other new unfinished business? Any other unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
Do we have to take action on the veto?
That's up to you guys. If you wanna take action on it, you take action on it.
Chairman, make a motion to override the mayor's veto.
There's a motion by Councilman Markovich to override the mayor's veto. Uh, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hinoza. Is there any discussion on overriding the mayor's veto?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
As the, as the ordinance stands currently, he vetoed it, it would have just died. So, we're voting now to uphold something that's already, he vetoed because he felt there was no need for it.
That's correct.
I, I'm just trying to figure out what's the purpose of voting, overriding the veto at this point, because to me, if the money's going nowhere, why would I vote for something that's, that's not gonna be utilized? It doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. President?
Councilman Hinoza?
Next year, next year, twenty-fourteen, we're gonna have to use about ten million dollars in casino money compared to thirteen. I was hoping it was five million, but it's not five million. It's gonna wind up being ten million, meaning that, uh, uh, when people start asking, uh, "When you gonna do my street?" Or, "When you gonna do my lights?", uh, there's a long way before that, uh, is gonna come by.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golak, roll call vote.
Markovich?
No.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
We are voting to override the veto?
Yes.
Okay.
Spitali?
No.
Vines?
No.
Kalwinski?
No.
Ullaki?
No.
Higgs?
No.
Emerson?
No.
Hinoza?
No.
Old Pinker?
No. Override fails, nine zero. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
I just wanted to reemphasize that NAACP is having their, um, lunching on Saturday at Dynasty Banquet Hall, and I am along with Awana Miller, and I think Reverend Pope will be, uh, somehow another awarded at, I don't know to what extent. I just wanted to put that out there, so if anyone's interested in attending, it will be on Saturday at the Dynasty Banquet Hall at noon.
Any other new unfinished business?
Uh, Mr. President? Councilman Hinoza, just to let everybody know that the, uh, uh, the Mexican Independence Parade is September fifteenth in East Chicago, parade will be taken off at, uh, twelve noon. Anybody would like to participate? Um, I don't think the city Hammond that I know of, unless I missed it, uh, declared, uh, uh, Mexican Independence Month or Hispanic, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month that I know of. I know we used to do it in the past. I don't know what happened this year or last year, but, uh, the parade is September fifteenth in East Chicago.
Any other new unfinished business? New unfinished business now closed. Public expression. First speaker of the evening will be Jerry Wilson, five-twenty-four Michigan.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Wilson, five-twenty-four Michigan Street. I'm an honorably, honorable discharged American veteran that suffers from PTSD, and I live at the Renaissance Towers. I've been there about a year now, and I'm asking you all for our help. Condition of that property is deplorable. Uh, I've complained to everybody I could, HUD, the building department, uh, nobody seems management. I can't get anything done for the residents. It's about four hundred people that live over there, and we're in bad shape over there. It's infested with bedbugs and roaches. During that last storm, we lost power. No emergency lighting, nowhere in the building. I had to get people out of elevators, escort people up the stairwells with a flashlight. Very few of those seniors have flashlights, so we're, I'm asking for you all's help to get code enforcement to that property and to inspect. I wrote letters to the building department, but I haven't seen any action yet, so that's what brings me to this council meeting. Thank you very much.
Sir, are you talking about the Humphrey Building?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about the Humphrey Building? Is that what you're saying?
Renaissance Towers, five-twenty-four Michigan...
Across the street from the Humphrey Building?
I'm not familiar with the Humphrey...
Okay, the Humphrey Building is on the corner. That's a senior housing.
I don't know.
And then across the street is the Renaissance where there are apartment complexes. Is that what you're talking about?
Michigan and Soul, Councilman. Michigan and Soul.
It's also two senior high-rise buildings. It's about two-hundred-and-thirty of us that live in that property.
That's Councilman Ullaki's district.
And so, I'm asking the city of Hammond to inspect that property and, and enforce the code violations because management and HUD is not adhering to what I've read and researched. So, that's what brings me here today to ask you all to give us some help. It's about four hundred residents over there. Most of the seniors that live there are extremely afraid. They won't speak up because they've been tricked to thinking that if you speak up, you will be kicked out. So, they're, they're extremely afraid. So, I'm trying to represent them and also myself. My mother's been there twenty-six years. I just recently got home. I've been there about a year now, and I see the conditions that they live upon because I lived there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Next speaker will be Mr. John Swinell.
Mr. President, uh, lady and gentlemen of the city council, I sit and listen this evening and I'm dumbfounded. We spend a long time discussing towing fees going up from twenty dollars to forty dollars. First of all, if your car's being towed, you've broken a law. There's a reason your car is being towed. I would love to find somebody to take my car and tow it somewhere for twenty dollars. It's not gonna happen anywhere. Twenty dollars is not covering the city's cost, anywhere near that cost. We talk about burdening the citizens with more fees. We're being hit with a one-and-a-half percent income tax, and we sit here tonight and find out, all of a sudden, we lose another five million dollars just as a random con, uh, comment by our controller. We need to discuss this budget. We need to go through it thoroughly. We need to find out where this money is going, where it should be going, and where we can make cuts and raise fees. And I implore all of you, please, go through it, work on it, but the citizens need help. One-and-a-half percent coming out of everybody's check is gonna be a lot of money, and it's a lot of money that's gonna be spent. There was a lot of work done to try and cut costs. That seems to have stopped, and I'm just afraid the budget's gonna go out of control. So, thank you all very much. Thank you all for your hard work. I know it's not easy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last speaker of the evening, Mr. George Stoya.
I think what a lot of people are overlooking, especially some of the people on the council, uh, specifically Mr. Markovich tonight, and it seems Chico, I mean, Mr. Hinoza also is the big elephant in the room. We had this property tax reform to do what? Save property owners from paying excess amounts in property taxes. So, yeah, there's been cuts, and now there's been a bunch of fees. It seems like we've robbed Peter to pay Paul. And all, all that's going on here, I think the mayor has seen that it wasn't necessary, that as these cuts were gradually made over the past five, six years, now we've got some other income coming in and we're gonna gradually build it back up. So, all this stuff about, you know, uh, twenty dollars, I mean, it's like, wow, we haven't raised a fee in, in six years. Well, you know, that should be a good sign. Maybe we didn't need it. Maybe we won't need it. The, what, again, what I've attacked on this is the eagerness with which this council seems to wanna raise fees. What, don't you like your property tax break? Tell me you don't like it. Tell me you wanna, you, you wanna destroy the two percent cap. This is ridiculous. Give the citizens a break when you talk about towing fees just forty dollars. That's on top of the other police reports and everything else, on top of any other fee that I don't even know about. So, I, I just don't understand some of, some of this criticism, uh, about this, this, I don't know what it is, this lust for money. Granted, we need money, I know that. I mean, you know, I wouldn't fall off the, but it's almost like, uh, the short story Hemingway, old man in the sea, guy wanna Pulitzer Prize. The Cuban fisherman Santiago goes out, way out into the, into the Atlantic or the Caribbean, one or two, and he lands this big marlin, the catch of a lifetime. He's got this surplus, this big fish. It's, it's, it's got prestige. It's a matter of his art as a fisherman and everything else, and while he's bringing it back in, the sharks are just tearing away at it. He's fighting with the sharks to preserve his catch, and that's just what's happened to this so-called tax reform thing. We gave the citizens a tax break. The state of Indiana, everybody voted on it. It won, if I recall, overwhelmingly, and now we wanna take it out of here and all the savings that people have realized, and then put it right back in on tax, on fees and everything else, to the extent that, gosh, we haven't done, we haven't, we haven't taxed any, or we haven't raised a fee for, uh, I keep combining, uh, uh, mixing up here taxes and fees, although it's a, technically a fee legally and all that, it weighs like a tax. So, I really ask you to remember this property tax reform thing. It was no joke, as we all know. That's it.
Mr. President?
Councilman Hinoza?
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to, uh, suspend the rules so that we can, uh, send a letter to Code Enforcement on the Renaissance Towers.
First you go back into the regular order of business, make the motion.
First, you go back into the regular order of business, make the motion. We're already in the regular order of business. No, we're not. We need to suspend the rules.
Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to send a letter to Code Enforcement.
Motion by Councilman Hinoza to suspend the rules. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs. All those in favor? Opposed? Rule suspended.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Yeah, I'd like to send a letter to Code Enforcement on the, to check the conditions at the Renaissance Towers on Michigan and Soul to check for bedbugs and roaches and emergency lighting and terrible conditions at the building. I so move.
Second. Mr. President.
It's a motion by Councilman Hinoza, second by Councilman Higgs, to send a letter to Code Enforcement in regards to 524 Michigan. All those in favor?
Mr. President, discussion.
Councilman Higgs.
Also, I'd like to let it go to the Fire Department in regards to this particular incident to make sure that their safety is not in jeopardy. And it is appalling and very, very offensive just to know that people have to live in these conditions. If that had been in my district, I would be out there tonight. But however, whatever is needed, we need to step up and get it corrected because nobody should have to live in those conditions. So the Fire Department, Code Enforcement, and every department there is to inspect and take a thorough look at the building. They're getting federal funds. It is no, no excuse for this building not to be up to code. None whatsoever. It's deplorable. This man is telling me they're living like street animals.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
With everything that Mr. Higgs, Councilman Higgs said and also that the Code Enforcement get back to the council on their findings.
It's motion by Councilman Hinoza, second by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to Code Enforcement, Fire Department, all other departments involved in 524 Michigan. All those in favor? Opposed? Letter granted.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.